For our selectmen's meeting on January 7th at 7:00 PM. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple announcements tonight. Reminder that the town offices will be closed on Monday, January 21st in observance of Martin Luther King Day. The board's next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 22nd. Reminder, third and fourth quarter, real estate and personal property tax bills were mailed out. It is your responsibility to be certain you received yours in the mail. That's it for announcements. Boy, these papers are really bright. We have approval minutes and warrants. We have December 17th of 2012, 7:00 PM. And seeing all were present, so most who attended.
Motion, accept December 17th meeting, 2012 at 7:00 PM.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any warrants?
I don't have any with me. If there are any, they'd be on the secretary's desk and you can certainly sign them individually.
Report of town officials. First public forum. Correspondents. We have... I just want to remind all the boards and committees that the deadline to submit their budgets for the annual report is Thursday, February 14th, 2013. And you can email them to Helen at execsec@milvilleMA.org or you can call her and make other arrangements to drop them off. Anything else for correspondence? We have one appointment tonight, and that's for the police department. And everyone probably remembers Michael Martenson was here back in December. And we agreed to appoint him as full-time and also send while he attends the police academy. And we just were waiting for an agreement that he would stay on board for X amount of years. And then if he did not, then we would not reimburse him for his academy. So he's looking to be a full-time officer tonight.
Mr. Chairman, the police chief did telephone me and regrets that he couldn't be here. He's actually tied up on a call right now. Officer Martenson has been part-time for three years. This full-time appointment would be through June 30th, 2013. At such time, he would be up for a reappointment. So that would be effective today.
Okay. So, any discussion on that?
Motion to appoint Michael Monison till June 30th, 2013.
Oh, second night. Any further discussion? This was for the full-time officer?
Yes, correct.
So any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, all right?
Congratulations, Michael.
Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening. My name's Michael Martenson. I currently work for the town of Millville Police Department as a part-time police officer. And I know the chief couldn't be here tonight, I know he's tied up on a call. But I do want to just say a few words. I do want to thank Chief Landry for the opportunity that he's given me to be a full-time police officer at the Millville Police Department. And I also wanted to thank the board and Helen for giving me the opportunity to be, work here in the town of Millville as a full-time police officer. It's been my goal for a long time. Chief Landry's given me the opportunity and I'm gonna take it. And I hope I can serve the town of Millville for years to come. So I'd like to thank you guys.
Good luck in the academy.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, executive secretary report?
Just very few things this evening. Twenty-one Hope Street, the bollards that had been stolen. We did receive the insurance reimbursement, less the deductible. We got a check for $1,900. Replacement of those is pending. The chief meeting with the new residents, so that is on hold. But I did want to let the board know that we did file the claim and did receive reimbursement for those. As the chair already mentioned, annual town reports, requests were sent out to all departments last week. Those are due February 14th. Ethics, excuse me, ethics training. Informational packets were sent out to all town employees as well at the end of December. The new online training is, has to be completed by everybody by April 5th. So those have gone out. And the last thing is, just the board of selectmen has a meeting this Wednesday evening at 6:30. And that's with the Board of Health regarding the emergency dispensing site. And that'll be up on the second floor. And that has been posted. And that's it. With the holidays, it hasn't been too much, so. 6:30.
Old business. I have one, just quick update on the senior van. Spoke with Representative Curles last week. And he's still negotiating with Oxbridge to negotiate with Millville. There right now, their town administrator has his hands slightly tied right now with the asphalt plant issue going on over there. So he hasn't given it any great thought or, you know. So with the disaster with the asphalt plant, so he apologizes for that. Rep. Curles did say that as soon as Oxbridge gets their hands untied with that, they'll start talking with them and hopefully do something for us.
And just to piggyback on that, Mr. Chair, I have been in contact with Mendon as well. A member of the Board of Selectmen as well as the town administrator. And they are discussing that as well. Just waiting to hear back from them.
Do we, just in regards to the van, do we know what the grants are? When they come out?
The grants open up, I think it's next week. It's mid-January. Yeah, the mobility assistance grant. You have a much better chance if you're sharing the service or regional. Yeah, so that's the goal, is to try to get with another town and put in for one of those vans.
Well, I guess that's it for old business. So new business, we have the budget review and to schedule some meetings. I spoke to the building inspector tonight. He said he'd be level funding, but he'll let us know before the end of budget season. But he's looking at the possibility of adding one half-hour per week to his budget, which that would be his salary. So that, I told him if he wants something like that, then that would definitely have to be in for budget season and have to go to town meeting. He says that with the increase in permits that he's been doing now and what he sees coming in the future, that could justify... To properly, how did he explain it? To properly process all the prints that go with all these permits takes it more time than what was being done.
What's nice is that people aren't afraid to pull permits out.
Right.
That's why they're still making the nets.
Because we're getting permits pulled from work that has been done years back for little things like sheds and mine and stuff like that. But people felt guilty and started pulling permits for it. That's all I have for that. Anyway, so you checked off which ones?
Yep, I submitted with the budgets that were submitted, a list of those that were submitted and those that were missing or have not been submitted as yet. The departments who had not or have not submitted their budgets have been reminded again via email. And I guess the next step for the board is to go through those that have submitted and determine whether you'd like to schedule meetings with them or if you're satisfied with what has been submitted.
It's hard to, I mean, some have decreased, but it's very hard to decrease anything right now. So I appreciate the ones that did put the effort to decrease what they could because, I mean, for the last four years that I've been doing this, we've done some serious cutting all the way around and I...
That's correct. And as I mentioned in my cover memo to you, many of the departments, including many of the budgets that I prepared for the board, verbally advised that they could not cut. And they pretty much level funded. There was nothing they could cut from because they've cut so much over the past years. So if it's the desire of the board to provide a decrease or submit a decrease to the finance committee as requested, those department heads have asked that the board cut where they think should be cut.
I didn't see any, and I can't think of anything more to cut without being, you know, I'm not an expert in obviously every department, but...
Now, if it's the goal to maintain services, at least for these departments, there'd be no place to cut. It would certainly affect a service if we were to cut. And also, I just wanted to point out that there are many that are premature. And the figures provided are, you know, a best guess scenario at this point, such as the insurance and the retirement. Those will likely change as budget season progresses.
Yep. Now, we need to start, schedule meetings with... Who we should start with? I mean, obviously, the ones that are already submitted.
I think anyone who didn't submit a decrease, just sit and talk to them. I realize they say it's up to us to decide, but they're also the experts.
Yeah, these are all level funded or decreased pretty much, right?
There were some that I think increased. I know I had to increase a couple of mine, so.
So, I mean, we can meet with the increases and the ones that haven't.
The increase in the level funded deal? Just to find out where they are and why they're there. I mean, like, I saw health insurance. I know why that is.
Did you want to do that at the next regular meetings, during the meetings, before the meetings? Or did you want to choose a different day of the week to have those meetings?
I mean, I think the ones with smaller budgets, I think we could do them at 6:00 or 6:30. You know, because it's not gonna take more than a half-hour. Some of them, they've got such small budgets. So certainly, maybe we could do two in one night between 6:00 and 7:00. And then save a couple big ones for a different night.
At 6:00 o'clock on the 22nd, you've got storm water. So that would take up that meeting. So you're going into February 4th. I've got 6:00 with the planning board. So you'd be going now into February 19th.
I don't want to go that late. We could make a special meeting, I guess. What about next Monday? The 14th? I got nods on this side of all. You good?
Okay.
7:00? And then...
Yep, that's this Wednesday, January 9th at 6:30. And then I will schedule with as many departments as I can for the 14th, beginning at 7:00. And then you have the 22nd at 6:00. And I had additionally received information from the chairman of the finance committee with some dates, but there was a little bit of confusion with that. I emailed him back later this afternoon. So hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have clarification on the meeting dates with finance. But those will be on Wednesday evenings at 6:30. What is unclear at this time is which Wednesday evenings. So I will have that to you shortly.
We've got the all-board meeting too?
Yep.
Can we do it at the same time?
That's October. All-board meeting is in October. That, on the agenda, selectman Wing wanted to discuss the possibility of changing the format.
Yeah, I just thought, because I know that night is very long and tedious for us. And then we follow by our own meeting. I've seen in the past where it's been done where you have your boards come in maybe once or twice a year and just give a quick, you know, maybe two boards a meeting. Come in and just kind of give an update of where they are, where they're going. And then the all-board meeting, October's a really good time, especially in financial times, to kind of have a discussion of where's the town going, what can we do? Make it really more of a conversation about the state of our town, the state of our community. And, you know, because there's people out there, like, you know, the new woman on the finance committee, she knows things, you know. And you start hearing people talk and they say, "Oh, I know this and I know this." You really gather in all the resources of the people and just really have an open discussion with a few bullet items or topics to talk about. And then everyone feels that there's some working together amongst the boards, trying to set things right for the community. I just think an open discussion's really nice rather than being, "We did this, we did this. This is how many permits, this is what we did." We know that. And I know the townspeople want to hear that. So still have it within our meeting, just one or two boards a month. But then use that all-board meeting for something really constructive. Just an idea. That was just my feelings.
That's a good idea.
So how would you like to proceed with that? I can schedule it however you'd like. I just need a little guidance.
And when, and just the long October?
Yeah, still do our all-board meeting as we do it. But have it more of just a, you know, a discussion rather than a three-hour marathon of 15-minute blurbs. And then just do, every meeting have two or three committees come in and just give a five or 10-minute, you know, because that's all they really need. I mean, some of our bigger ones, like our bigger departments, you might only book one for that night with a smaller one. You know, the flag one and all, you know, those little ones that don't need a lot of our time. So just at every meeting. And then they can also, you know, they would maybe either sign up or somehow, you know, plug it in so that it works for their schedule also. You know, I know we have our reports of town officials. If we just kind of...
Plug one in each?
One or two or how many, you know.
Yeah, so if we had...
That is a long night.
Yeah, so the whole month of October will be all long meetings, but better spread out four weeks.
No, I say start now in February.
Yeah, that's...
Just have all year long, just have two groups or three groups come in. And then you'd be, you know, and then the townspeople are hearing. Because we already, we know, we know what our groups are doing. We know what our departments are doing for the most part. It's the townspeople that want to hear it. So enough of them watch the meetings that they'll catch it at the beginning. They'll get used to the new format and, you know.
That's true, yeah.
Because I think that night is just tedious. I'm just saying. We already know what's going to be said.
By the time we're halfway through, our mind is toast anyway.
It is, it is. And the last person, the last person deserves our attention as much as the first person. And I don't think we serve them, we do them justice that night.
Yeah, we leave that spot on the agenda. And the only one that ever speaks is Mr. Repose or the fire police chief, you know.
But if we plug a couple in, I mean, there was some who didn't come that night. Where now it's like, well, let's work with your schedule. We want to see them. We want the townspeople to see who our employees are, who's working for them. And instead of getting one member from one board just to come down and give a five-minute blurb, their whole board may come in. You know, I think it would just be better. But I'd say start like soon.
And then, I don't know. Start alphabetical order and see who wants to go first. And then the town hall facility maintenance, that was John.
Yeah, that was me. Well, I just know that we have numerous issues going on. We've heard about it probably for the past year, maybe two years. My thinking is, is if, whether it's, I don't know cost-wise. I don't know if we have someone qualified that can go through our building and say, "What is needed? What does this building need?" And not only this building, probably the police department should be done, the library should be done, the senior center should be done. You know, what are the areas to be fixed? What are our plans? Just like we did for the school. What's immediate and what's... And then we have a plan of action rather than band-aiding all of our problems as we go along. We've got this issue, we fix it. Let's really take a look at our facilities, see what's the need. And I'm not saying we're gonna be able to do it. Joe will say we can't. But I think it gives a projection of where we are, where we're going. I mean, when was the last time this building had a roof on it? I don't recall a roof being put on while it was town hall.
There's one up there now.
Well, it's on there, Charlie, but it's the same one that was up there when we were kicking kickballs.
Oh, really?
Well, I'm gathering. It's probably close to that. Thirty years ago.
Now, we did have, we received a grant to do a roof inspection program back in '07 or '08. So I do have that report, but we have since found out that we do have several leaks in the roof. And I have suggested to the board and to the finance committee that we do hire, you know, individuals, just as you said, to do walkthroughs of all of our town buildings. But funding, that's the issue. There's been a recommendation to utilize our own building inspector.
Right.
But he can barely get the work done that he needs to do. So I don't foresee him taking on that additional responsibility.
Why couldn't we just like hire private contractors? You know, can you look at our roof, tell us what we need and give us a quote? It don't cost anything.
Well, you're getting quotes. But if you want a full facility, you want someone who's structural.
Well, that's gonna cost then. You're gonna bring somebody in, look what it costs for the school. It's gonna cost the town a pretty penny.
If you have a heating problem, you call a heating company and come in. What's wrong with that boiler? Give us an estimate. Plumbing, electrical. There is no structural problem with this building.
Well, there are structural problems. We, when we had an architect in a few years back to look at our exit signs, he noted some structural issues back then.
Is that in a report or something?
It's not in a written report because we didn't pay for a written report. Additionally, when I've had contractors in this building replacing doors and windows, they've informed me that the brick is crumbling. And a lot of them don't even want to come back and work on the building. There's no insulation between the interior walls and the brick. So, I mean, there are several issues far beyond my scope of knowledge. But I think it would require, you know, a certified construction person or architect or engineer to really give us a written report that we can have in hand. And to Mr. Pullen's point, we do have a company coming in to give us an estimate and proposal for our heating system, but we are paying for that. They're charging us to do that. Yeah, so it's not free. They do charge you.
So we should really get them to give, if we're paying, get it, be sure it's extensive.
I'll be there.
An extensive report of it. I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we're dealing with a league, we're dealing with the, you know, various issues. And I just, I just think we need to know what the whole picture is. Especially after going through the school. And if we can get a couple prices to see what it's going to cost us, it might not be in the cards for this year, but at least we know it's there and it's something we want to look at.
Well, you know, one suggestion, I think, that would probably be a cost savings is rather than hiring independent vendors or contractors, is if the town hired somebody, an employee, part-time who is qualified to do that, I think it would be less expensive to pay a salary than it would to outsource it to vendors. Some type of a maintenance engineer.
Would you do a survey or to do actual work?
Well, I mean, a survey would be part of it, but then to stay on and manage any work that's gonna come out of the survey that they do.
I think actually last year, BMR, the high school, tried something like that and they weren't able to find a qualified person for the rate of pay with the expertise they were hoping. And I think they, I could be misspeaking, but I believe that they never filled that position.
And somebody that does fill that position is most likely gonna like find a lot of things just so he'll keep his job. They need me because look at the things I'm finding.
Right, that's how they justify it. So sometimes that's all it is.
But maybe you could check some other communities. If they have facility managers, some of these larger communities, Milford, even North Smithfield. I mean, if they have someone who's qualified and experienced that enter kind of an agreement with just to do a once-over, it might be cheaper than the engineering company like we had for, you know. And some of these larger cities, I'm sure, has some that puts that bill.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
But how about a building inspector this time? Nobody more qualified than him to do that.
Well, he could definitely do the roof, structure of this building.
We oughta take in the resources we already have. We have electrical inspector, we have plumbing inspector, building inspector.
Well, maybe that's something to look at, maybe in our town hall budget item is a facilities check. And then there's a stipend for the fire, not fire, building, gas, electrical, you know, whatever they are, and then do a stipend per year if they check our buildings and give us an update. You know, I don't know which way is right way. I mean, these are all just ideas, but we need something.
Need to do something, I think is pretty right. The prices just go overwhelming.
The cheapest and best option.
I don't mind paying money. I don't mind paying money for quality. That's not a problem.
That's right.
I think when you pay less, you hit some par sometimes.
I liked your idea about going to another town, so Milford.
A bigger, yeah.
Because you know, if they've somehow agreed to do that, they're not gonna come in and load it up hoping to get some work out of that. That's gonna tell you what a difference.
Even, I mean, like some of the bigger, like Franklin. I mean, there's so many towns around that have so many buildings that they must have someone. Yeah, just an agreement for a once-over on our buildings. I don't know.
It's worth asking. Yeah, because other towns are always willing to help.
Yeah, because they're gonna send them down for one day, collect the money and, you know. Or get a little, something extra, you know.
The question still is, where is that funding coming from? Even if it's not a lot, I mean, there is no line item for that, so.
Well, I don't think our...
It's just a matter of priorities.
Right. And I think it matters what the cost is. I mean, if we're looking at a couple thousands to bring someone in from another community, I think we could probably find a way to save ourselves thousands later if that number comes in from like a... If that number comes in from like a private firm and we're looking at tens of thousands, then, then we may have to put it on hold. But I'd like to see what, what we can get, what numbers, how much would it cost through a variety of ways? Whether it be, you know, a larger community, whether private qualified people come in at different stages, I don't know. I just think we need to do something about it.
Well, definitely don't want to wait until it crumbles.
No.
Then it's big money.
Well, somebody that does it every day for a living, he's just gonna give you a better report than an engineer.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Because an engineer does, doesn't do it. You know, he can see something wrong, but he doesn't know how to fix it.
They know code and they know how to build, they don't.
Because we fix the engineers' problems all the time, don't we?
I just think if we get some numbers, then we, then we know where to fit it in, next year, two years, or, you know, band-aid it for a few years.
There you go. All right, final public forum.
I don't know if any of you were aware, but today or tomorrow is Lisa Cheever's last day as librarian. So she's given eight years of service to the town. She gave her notice about three weeks ago. The trustees probably should have notified the Selectmen.
Yeah.
They obviously did not.
Did you know, Helen?
Lisa mentioned it to me in passing, but I've been waiting for the official letter from the trustee.
It really was the responsibility of the trustees to send that.
I actually, as we were getting up, I just leaned over and I said, did you talk about the library? Because I wanted to make sure that this board sends a letter along, because I think she's been the most cooperative and the most understanding.
I mean, she's always worked well with the Finance Committee. She's always presented well to the Selectmen, come to the meetings that it's appropriate for her to be at and.
She's highly, it was highly professional during very difficult times.
She was there, she was there this, this morning unpaid, just tying up loose ends to try to, try to make an easy, yeah, easy transition into the, to the next person. But I know that they, they haven't hired anybody else yet. I'm sure that they're trying to source people now, but, so, but, but she, she's got a better opportunity, a, a full-time position and.
She deserves it.
She absolutely deserves it. And then she's given us eight years, so it's, probably warrants a little recognition.
Yeah, definitely. Make up some letter for her. So, thanks to Lisa Cheever's for all her eight years of hard work. And I, I had mentioned to her over the summer that we would like to see her possibly be a senior senate director as well, but she said that she was actually looking to pursue her education and work more in the field that she went to school for, so. I'm disappointed but not surprised and wish her all the luck in the world.
Well, she won't be far. If anybody wants to see her, they just need to go to Blackstone.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, if there's no more public forum, then our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January 22nd, 2013 at 7:00 PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center. And a motion to adjourn. So, okay. Bye.